But I couldn't say everyone does or everyone doesn't. It would be a little bit of both.
Thank you.
For trustee Agnew?
So just a comment for trustee Carabella. Just because I've been through it with my kids and I can say that I do know that further to what trustee Daly, or secretary Daly said is that there are some students that you see who will get baptized Catholic. But I have also seen a number of our students who let's say are Orthodox or, you know, another faith like that, they do receive a special blessing. So I've seen them participate in confirmation or participate in, you know, the process of the sacrament. So they'll be at the church, they'll be with their peers, they'll be there. It's just that the ceremony may look a little different for them. And like I said, I've seen them receive a special blessing, let's say in, you know, in place of the confirmation piece. But I do know again from experience that it tends to, to be that it's an all-inclusive type of opportunity for all the students should they wish to participate.
Thank you trustee Agnew. And just to follow up then, is those children, there, there's no opting out process for them? Is there?
Opting out in, sorry, three madam chair, opting out in what sense?
That they don't participate.
Do you mean? I'm sorry trustee Carabella, are you referring to a baptized Catholic student?
No, a non-baptized.
Well, they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't participate in the sacrament, no.
Right, but they don't opt out of all the instruction and being, as trustee Agnew pointed out, participating in, in being with their classmates and listening to the instructions.
Yeah, that wouldn't be typical.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you director Daley, seeing none, I'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi, has he joined us yet?
I'm here. Against.
Opposed? Trustee Carabella?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, I'm opposed. I'll talk later, next time. I missed having another question, sorry.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
The motion passes, it'll be brought to the meeting of October 2020. Moving on to item 4.2, policy II-34. So can I get a mover that the policy committee recommends that policy II-34, participation in programs and courses of study in Catholic religious education be forwarded to the October 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Can I get a? Duarte, thank you, can I get a secondor?
I'll second.
O'Brien.
Trustee Agnew. Sorry, she beat you to a trustee O'Brien. I will pass this on to director Daley to direct or to respond.
Okay, thank you and three madam chair. So policy II-34 refers to student study of programs and courses in Catholic religious education. Again, there's a few changes to, a little bit of language to update it. But other than that, the policy essentially stands as it is. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll open the floor up to any questions. Trustee Carabella? You have the floor.
Thank you, three madam chair. So I was actually wondering what your reason was for changing the phrasing. And, and you mentioned director Daley that it's to update. I, I don't see how this is updating it. I found reading it quite confusing. And I'm thinking a parent who is reading this might also be confused. What is ecclesial subject? I thought it was a lot clearer before that we teach the truths of the faith in line with the magisterium of the church. I'd like to keep the old phrasing. So if you could explain some of this new phrase, how do you see it as being updated?
Thank you and through you madam chair. So that phrasing with, beginning with the magisterium of the Catholic Church is taken directly from the new directory for catechesis which came out this past summer. It was a suggestion to use that updated language. But certainly that's up to trustees to decide whether that gets included.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow up?
I, I know the magisterium of the church, that is, we know what that is. That's the teaching arm of the church. And that was in the old phrase as well, the one that's crossed out. How would you explain what an ecclesial subject is?
Thank you and through, through you madam chair, I would explain the ecclesial subject. The education system is subject to the magisterium of the church.
Trustee Carabella, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I have no further follow up right now, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Through you madam chair, I think trustee Carabella took my question. I'm as confused after reading that one statement. But it's got some theological implications, but I'll just leave it at that. That was my question, I'm confused with the change that is proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, trustee Antumasi?
Through you madam chair. So the change, if we follow the change with the magisterium of the church in the exercise of the teaching office, we need to establish what the teaching office is. So if we go back to the original word, that's exactly what that original word wording did. And that is to establish what the teaching office is.
Do you have a question there trustee Antumasi, or is that just a comment?
No, that spoke to the fact that the original wording established what the teaching office did as opposed to shortening the statement with what we currently have. So in essence, when we talk about the teaching office, it doesn't establish what that office does or is.
Okay, so it's a comment, thank you trustee Antumasi. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you madam chair, to director Daley. Director Daley, just to get clarification, so in that change of phrasing, are you saying that the board is an ecclesial subject? Or is, not you, but the catechesis program coordinator, are they saying that we, the board, are an ecclesial subject?
Be my reading of it, yes trustee O'Brien.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a follow up trustee O'Brien?
Uh, no, I don't, thanks.
Okay, last call for questions.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my hand up typed in there. It's trustee Carabella, can I go ahead or do I have to type my name in?
No, you, you can have the floor trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Also on the second page, the fourth bullet, again, I find the original, it says, "The home, the church, and the school are partners in the education of children in faith and morals." And then the new updated version, you know, "The home, the church, the home and school are collectively responsible for the education and faith development of the children sacredly entrusted to them." I still find that the first phrase is more concrete and specific and easier to understand for parents. So I, I'm not going to vote in favor of the updating. Or also again, if mister, if director Daley wants to comment on this phrase.
Thank you for the, the comment trustee Carabella. It was a suggestion made through our religious studies department that that language would be appropriate, but certainly your, your comments are noted.
Do you have a follow up question trustee Carabella?
No, just a comment that I always find that the easier it is for parents to understand, the clearer it is with examples and language that we're, we're, we can understand. I prefer that, I find that it's helpful, more helpful, thank you.
Thank you trustee Carabella. I see trustee O'Hearn Zernota, you have your hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you madam chair and with all due respect trustee Carabella. I love the new wording in that point form because you can have partners, but they're not always responsible. But to add the word collectively responsible, I find that to make that more of a fulsome statement, so I just really wanted to make that comment.
Thank you trustee O'Hearn Zernota. Is there any other questions? Uh, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you madam chair. I, I agree with trustee Zernota, O'Hearn Zernota. That, the word responsible does really give that phrase a punch. I think that might be worth considering. The truth, I like that phrase. It's the one about ecclesial subject, I'm not that hot on some. I don't know, is it possible to consider keeping one and taking the other one? I want to just a suggestion. The one, I, I agree with trustee O'Hearn, very good that we're responsible. But I, I am still struggling with the word ecclesial subject. I've just heard of the term before. Thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. So how about we do this, barring no further questions? Let's, let's get a consensus on the first part. I'll go around and just let me know, this isn't a vote on the policy, this is just simply a vote on the new language. If you'd like to keep the new language, just because I've heard now three people make mention of possibly wanting to revert it to the old. So let's, again, this will just be a consensus. So I'll go in order here, trustee Agnew, in favor of the new language or opposed to the new language?
I'm in favor of the new language, okay, thank you.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'd rather leave things where they are, I'm opposed to the new language, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Duarte?
Old, old language please.
Okay, trustee Antumasi?
Old.
Uh, trustee Carabella?
Our original language, old.
Trustee Murphy?
Uh, sorry, I may have missed this part of the discussion. Are, is it all or nothing, or can we?
No, no, we're just, we're looking, we're just looking right now currently at the first part, the first bullet. We're not voting on, yes, the ecclesial.
Yeah, ecclesial subject, I'm not a big fan of.
Okay, so that's not, so keep it the way it currently is.
Right.
Okay, so that's, I, okay, so trustee, uh, O'Brien? Trustee O'Brien? So I'm going to go on to trustee O'Hearn Zernota.
I guess under the principles, the second point form ecclesial, I'm fine with going back to the original language.
Okay. Trustee O'Brien, I, I don't want to speak for you, but I think what you said was you weren't in favor of the ecclesial and, but you were in favor of the second part. Can you maybe even just type in?
I, I think trustee O'Brien had power outage.
Okay, good, we got it, thank you trustee O'Brien. So the old language for that piece. And then are we all okay with the second point? I didn't hear, I think I only heard one person who was, who objected to the second part of it. That's the fourth bullet on page, page two. Is anybody opposed to this change? I know trustee Carabella didn't like it, is there anybody else?
I'm also.
I am opposed.
Trustee DeRosa and trustee Antumasi, anybody else? Trustee O'Brien is typing. Okay, new language, so trustee O'Brien's new language, trustee Agnew?
I'm fine with the new language.
Okay, trustee Duarte, Duarte?
Yeah, new language is good.
Okay, trustee Murphy?
New language.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
No, I'm good with it, yep.
Okay, so the consensus is the new language. There's only one other change and I'm assuming there's no issue on, on that piece. Which is on subsection 11, B. Trustee Carabella? Give your hand up.
Yes, thank you, yes. Is there any way that we could add into that new phrasing, the word morals? I think that is important, it's about right and wrong. And it's certainly about, our faith has the Ten Commandments, the Beatitudes, there are lots of things that are right and wrong. And I think if we can put that word morals into the, the sentence, "The church, home, and school are collectively responsible for the education, education in faith development and morals of the children sacredly entrusted to them." I could make that amendment.
So trustee Carabella, would you not think that the education in faith development, that it doesn't encompass morals? The beliefs of the church and the teachings of the church all encompass that? So I'm not sure that we need to, to spell specifically morals, but.
I'd like to make an amendment. I think it is an important word. And it's again, a very clear word, because what the faith means to one person and to another, it does vary. We have to, you know, acknowledge that. We're all on different faith journeys and faith understandings. And that's why I always like language that's specific and clear. And I would like to add that in, to add clarity. So I would like to make an amendment to add that in.
Okay, thank you trustee Carabella. Let's hear from other trustees their thoughts on it. Trustee Murphy? Do we have a second, a secondor for trustee Carabella's addition?
I'll second.
It's trustee DeRosa, so I'll open up the floor to, for discussion. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you madam chair. I think trustee Carabella, you mentioned we're responsible for, you're just using the word morals. I think it would be moral instruction, we're not responsible for other people's morals or the end result of the teaching. So I think you'd have to maybe clarify that somewhat.
I like that, thank you. I, I really didn't have the exact wording in my, in my head, so I think that's a great suggestion. So it could read, are, are you saying trustee Murphy, it would read, "The church, home, and school are collectively responsible for the moral instruction?"
Right, if you wanted to add moral, I think you would have to clarify it moral instruction.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so are you, are you amending then what you've put forward trustee Carabella? I don't think trustee Murphy is putting an amendment forward, I think he's just.
That's right.
Putting the moral into context.
That's right, I like the way he's phrased that, that'd be great. So add the word moral instruction. So responsible for the education and moral instruction and faith development. Okay, can somebody help me fit that in, hold on? "The church, the home, and the school are collectively responsible for the education and faith development and moral instruction of the children sacredly entrusted to them."
Okay, so we're just adding in the word instruction. Trustee Murphy, did you have a follow up?
No, I just wanted to clarify that. I have enough trouble being responsible for my morals, I don't want to take on 37,000 other people.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so we'll take this piece to a vote. Trustee Murphy?
I am in favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm comfortable with the old wording, not in favor.
Well, we're, we're already gone past that piece, trustee DeRosa, we're, we're looking at the addition of moral instruction to the new language.
But we, did we get past a piece of voting on the original versus no changes?
Yes, we did, we did that prior to this discussion starting.
I still have the same opinion that I'd, I'd rather see no changes.
All right. Trustee Duarte?
In favor of this addition of word moral.
Thank you, trustee Antumasi?
In favor.
And trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Okay, so we'll.
I'm also in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry trustee Gubert, I apologize. I'm just, you know what, you haven't been to the last couple meetings, so I just got to get used to, I even highlighted your name that you were here, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, no problem.
I'll try not to do it again. Okay, so then we've got one last amendment, just for the sake of being consistent, as we've gone line by line, on subsection 11, we've changed B to be reflective of what the appropriate language would be. Do we have any comments on this? All right, that being said, we'll go to a vote on the entire policy. So we had trustee Duarte moved and trustee Agnew seconded, we've made the amendments, they'll be reflective. I'll take it to recorded vote, trustee Agnew in favor. Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien? Okay, he's going to type, I'm assuming. Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
So trustee O'Brien's vote is numerically insignificant anyways, and I think he's commented on, on all, but if you'd like to put in your vote trustee O'Brien, you can just type it in and I'll make sure it's noted. I did it already. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 4.3, policy II-12, academic promotion. Can I get a mover that the policy committee recommends that policy II-I-12, academic promotion be forwarded to the October 2020 regular board meeting for approval?
I'll move it.
Trustee Agnew moves it, can I get a secondor?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte. Thank you, and this will go over to executive officer Joel O'Hara.
Thank you madam chair and through you. This report was brought forward to the May policy meeting. And where, again, it was presented, there was no significant changes presented at that meeting, was deferred to the next policy meeting. So again, it's before you, subject to review and approval.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you madam chair, through you. I'd like for someone to explain to me, I see a contradiction between, between the first bullet that says candidates must have the necessary qualifications as determined by the board versus the fourth bullet that gives the director of education shall have the discretion to waive or amend the qualifications and requirements in individual situations in order to ensure that only the best candidates are appointed. I think those two clauses have a gnawing effect, they gnaw each other out. So I'd, I'd like some clarification around that. Madam chair.
Executive officer O'Hara, do you, can you answer that question?
Certainly, I'll certainly start it and if the director wants to add to it, that's absolutely fine. So with respect to your question, there certainly are times when we may not necessarily have someone who is fully qualified to a posting, such as, for example, we have acting positions, whether they be department heads or consultants, coordinators, from time to time. Those individuals are so brought forward, we try to pick the best person that, you know, we can and who has most of the qualifications. They're usually just short in one area and about ready to complete their qualifications in something and they're placed in the position for a temporary basis. So that would be the, the most common one that you would see and certainly I would speak to at, at board meetings in camera. We also, from time to time, could be in a position where we, we may not have, through a posting, we may not have individuals who are fully qualified, they may get placed in, in the pool with the expectation that by the time they are placed in the position, that they have completed all their qualifications. Again, depending on what the labor market may be, you may get in a situation where someone's almost completed their qualifications. And the director may choose to appoint that particular person because, again, they're, they are the best person that we have that's available. So again, the, the clause is an exception and it's always in the best interests of our, 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 our organization to go and make sure that we've got someone who, you know, would be the best in the role who's available. Hopefully that answers your question.
May I have a follow up madam chair?
Yes you may.
So thank you. Thank you for that. The question that comes up as a follow up is, how frequently have we had to invoke this clause in order to make an exception because we couldn't find candidates with the prescribed qualifications? So I guess another way to say it is, how, how often do we need to invoke this clause? Have we had to invoke this clause? And secondly, is there a process to the minister with respect to asking for exceptions to those, to those qualifications? And have we followed the?
Superintendent O'Hara, can you take that question?
Certainly, thank you madam chair and through you. Yes, there would be occasions where we would be promoting an individual who doesn't necessarily have all of the full qualifications. Those situations, you know, generally are rarer, but certainly if you're looking at positions like department heads, sometimes curriculum consultants, those can happen and do happen. And it's actually built right into the elective secondary collective agreement that, that these things can happen. And the reason for that usually ends up being that someone is missing, you know, our internal leadership program and so they're, they're in the process of completing it. Or we have had some times where we've had someone who's completing their principal part two and they're almost completing, almost completed it. Certainly the, there is provisions where boards can go and, and get exceptions made if someone is, is working on completing their. if someone is working on completing their, for example, principals' qualifications. And certainly, we can get approval to appoint those individuals. There are many boards in the province that have to do that because there may not be qualified applicants in their jurisdiction. In our jurisdiction, we are certainly blessed by being in the GTA and having, you know, a larger pool. But I can tell you that the pool of candidates is becoming tighter, certainly at the moment. And so, you know, with that, there may be less individuals that might be fully qualified. That doesn't mean that they're not going to be fully qualified in short order. So again, hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Hara. Trustee Duert, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. Couple of months back, when this policy came for discussion, we specifically discussed this particular bullet number four, and it was sent back for a particular reason. If my memory serves me correct, some kind of research was to be done. I'm wondering if somebody can jog my memory about this, why we send this policy back.
I could.
Sorry, is that you, Trustee O'Brien?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yes, okay. We did have a power out here, and I think I'm getting back to power. And as response to Trustee Duert, yes, one of us was supposed to reach out. I did email 12 boards across the provinces and asked them about that specific question about taking an exception regarding qualifications. And the answer actually was quite interesting, and then I got back. Six responded out of the 12. And to my surprise, actually, most boards do have that clause in there in some form. A few don't, but most of them do. So it was kind of a good learning for me. I reflected on this myself. I guess I can see a situation where a candidate was ideal and maybe they're a week away from their final completion of their principal qualifications. And I can see that being a time to employ that. So, like I said, I did reach out to 12 boards. Six were public boards, six were Catholic, and it was across the whole province. And again, most of them did have that clause in there. So I'm kind of torn about whether or not I should go in or not. I think the crux of the discussion last time was, we wanted a policy such that there'd be no hiring, maybe preferentially, without looking at it objectively. So I don't know. And if, Madam Chair, could I make a, put forward a suggestion? I've thought a lot about this.
You know what, Trustee O'Brien, can I get you to go? You're in the queue, I believe, but there's a couple of people just before. If you could give a suggestion, I think you've answered Trustee Duert's question. And I'll just see if he has a follow-up and then hold on, hold on, suggestion?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Trustee Duert, do you have a follow-up?
No, no, no follow-up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Antumasi.
Through you, Madam Chair. So this particular policy, if we go back to the application and scope, it speaks to superintendents, principals, coordinators, and so on. I would support this policy the way it's written if we were to remove superintendents and principals. The reason for that is that superintendents, first and foremost, require approval by the Minister's office. Secondly, principals, according to our policy, which stipulates that you must have completed. So my position on that is that if you haven't completed, then you shouldn't be applying anyways. And to piggyback off of what Trustee O'Brien has said, if you're a couple of weeks away, that wouldn't apply to you because by the time you go through the process, you would automatically qualify because two weeks, the whole process would take several months to go through, to establish a pool, and subsequently to appoint a person to the position. So I'm in agreement with it as long as superintendent and principal would be removed. Yeah, that's fine.
Do you have a question, Trustee Antumasi, or just your statement?
That was a statement based on the fact that this policy would be, this particular bullet would be contradictory to the fact that there are stipulated requirements within the Education Act that we must fulfill in order to appoint a superintendent. The Director would not have any discretionary power regardless because it would be left up to the Minister to approve if someone did not have. And the only time a minister approves for boards in our area where there is plenty of candidates with a proper qualification would be in northern boards where they have a difficult time attaining people that are qualified. So they do make the concession that if you're currently enrolled in the program, then you would be considered. But in our area, that very seldom happens. So I would remove those two from the preface, from the application and scope.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Antumasi. Just a reminder that there is also a procedure that comes in line with this policy, that this policy is just the overbridging policy that encompasses all of this. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. As I hear, as I hear the discussions around the table, one concept comes to mind, and that's we're creating a policy that is overreaching to some degree for an exception or for the exceptions that rarely occur. So maybe what we should be doing is, instead of thinking about writing a policy only to deal with the exceptions, why don't we think about how do we deal with that exception without overreaching statements in policy, which could be prone to all sorts of directions and misuse for all intents and purposes. And that's no reflection on the Director. In principle, this is a policy, this is something that we find ourselves not needing to apply on a regular basis. So we wouldn't be stopping anybody from, we wouldn't be stopping the Director from conducting everyday business.
Is there a question in your...
No, that's a remark. That's a remark. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien, the floor is yours.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So again, getting back to why this policy was brought back, there was a fear in that clause. There might be a subjective element, a hiring, and having the qualifications might alleviate that subjective element. I'm going to, I'd like to just throw something out to the trustees. It may sound a little radical. But we have been through a process lately where we did approve, as a board, the hirings of a superintendent. I just wonder how the trustees feel about extending that to principals and vice principals. I just put that out there.
Trustee O'Brien, can we just have trustees comment? There's a few other trustees online. Maybe we can have them comment on that, and then we can come back to you, or do you want...
No hurry, whenever anybody wants to weigh in on that.
Okay, because we've got, do you have any other questions right now?
No, I just want to let that settle in trustees' minds to think about.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella, if in part of your question, if you want to comment on Trustee O'Brien's remark?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Yes, I mean, what he's suggesting is what Trustee Antumasi started, that we take out superintendent, principal, and vice principal, then, those three. That those three have to have their qualifications and the others could be waived if it's coordinator, consultant, department head. So that would be a good amendment, I think, that would reflect also the process we recently went through. These are high leadership, high leadership positions. And I think injustice to the people who have completed their instructions and their qualifications. And as Trustee Antumasi said, that the requirements, the ministry requirements, that should be honored because, you know, when you have a process and you're going through it and you make a decision, so the first thing you ask is, okay, does everyone have their qualifications? And then that's the group you start with. Then you start the interview process and the other components of their resume and qualifications. So I think that's, that would be a great, a great amendment to this policy is to take those out so that those are subject to having completed all their requirements. And if the Director needs to waive for a coordinator or consultant, department head, you know, because of hiring positions and lack of somebody who's, who can, or I think use the word "acting", knowing that they will be finished, I think that would work for me. My other question is, when it says here, "and other, and any other positions of responsibility", can I have an example of some other position of responsibility before?
Trustee Carabella, I just, I think maybe we might actually be, we might benefit from having the procedure pulled up so we can go through that. Rosie, could you pull up the procedure? Because I thought I had a hard copy, but I don't. So let's pull up the procedure because I think it touches on everything that Trustee Antumasi referenced, which breaks down how the process goes for each category. And the other thing is, is if we take this out of here, where do we then put it? Then we have, we don't have another policy that talks about this. So this has always been the policy. And what we did is, if you recall, when we changed the procedure last time, we had the conversation about principals, and it was decided at this table not to have principals in it, but to actually do superintendents and have three trustees sit on the panel. So if you can just hold, bear with me one second, let's see if we can get this up. So I think we might be able to answer a whole bunch of questions that have just come up for comments.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. For the principals and the vice principals, it was not to be involved in the interview process, but that they still have their qualifications. That's different than saying they weren't part of it, so.
And that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is this policy goes in hand with the procedure. So, but by taking it out of the application piece of it, so let's just have a look at this and then we'll go back. So. So here's the application. So application and scope, which is kind of what, it's a recap of what the policy says. So the Board expects superintendents, other supervisor offered positions, assistant superintendents, principals, vice principals, and all those employees, responsibility, leadership. So this is our, this is obviously our mandate. Can you keep scrolling for me, Rosie? Thank you. So job postings. So that's obviously an operational requirement that would fall under Executive Officer O'Hara's Department, Human Resources. And then we go into eligibility application. So here's your eligibility of a candidate to be invited to the interview. Will be determined in accordance with the following screening criteria. They have to meet the requirements outlined in the advertisement, a letter of support from the applicant's immediate supervisor, a positive and current within past year letter of pastoral reference. The Director in consultation with senior staff may determine the number of candidates to be interviewed based on system needs, candidate track record of Catholic leadership experience, leadership candidate profile, and any other criteria pertinent to the individual position as indicated by the Director, panel members. And this is where we go into the breakdown. So the Director of Education has the right to be a member of any of the following panels, vice principal in elementary, up to three superintendents, executive officer of one principal recommended and approved, your VP secondary, and then keep scrolling down, executive officer, principal elementary, up to three superintendents, executive officer, principal secondary, assistant superintendent. And this is where we made those changes for three trustees, for assistant superintendent, and then superintendent. And then it goes into the selection process. And this is...
Point of order, Madam, through you, Madam.
What is your, could you state what's your point of order and what we're violating, Trustee Antumasi?
So we're violating, so the board, that particular policy does not speak to what we're talking about because if you go under the leadership position...
Sorry, Chair, Trustee Antumasi.
Are the requirements, the requirements for each position that we are now discussing.
Sorry, Trustee Antumasi, that's not a point of order. We're referring to the procedure because it coincides with the policy that we're talking about. So we're just going through this to make sure that the policy coincides with this because it is all part of it. So stage one is the discernment and self-identification. So we go here, it's the self-assessment tool, portfolio, and out of their leadership readiness and seek recommendation from his current supervisor. The supervisor will use their leadership candidate profile. Stage two is the selection interview. Can you keep scrolling for me, Rosie, if you don't mind? And then the selection criteria. And this is where it goes. Interview score, result, profile for effective Catholic leadership, resume package and portfolio. And then it talks about what the panels come into consensus, and that is to be communicated to the board trustees. It talks about the expectations, talks about the recommendations of the selection committee, and the Director creating a pool of qualified principals and vice principals, persons, and assigned. So it clearly establishes a difference between the superintendents and the principals, vice principals. And then obviously, because the Education Act always supersedes, and it doesn't speak to it here. So we're not in, we're not in any contravention of the Education Act because the only thing that we have in this procedure that talks about is the hiring process for superintendents and assistant superintendents, and that three trustees sit on that panel. So that was the only thing I wanted to point out, is that we have to look at the procedure that goes with this, and this is what we have made changes with. So going back to you, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand you just went through all that, but really, we set the policy and the procedures are made to reflect the policy. So if we decide that we want our superintendents, principals, and vice principals to not have their qualifications waived at the discretion of the Secretary of the Board, but we want them, those leadership positions of superintendent, principal, and vice principal, that they come to the interview with full qualifications. We can ask for that.
Absolutely. Trustee Carabella, that wasn't, that wasn't the point. I was referencing the removal of the preface piece of it. We're just pulling the policy back up. I apologize. The first piece of it, removing the principals, this superintendents and assistant superintendents because it's in violation of the Education Act, that's the piece that I was referencing, is taking out superintendent out of that piece of principle. Our procedure talks about what the actual process. If the issue is, if the issue is the discretion piece, and I think we should just speak to the discretion piece.
Yes. So, okay, well, I thought I was speaking to the discretion piece. If, I would just like the discretion, I don't know if staff wants to come back and we can vote on showing us that we do want to hold the superintendent, principal, and vice principals to their qualifications, and the others could have their qualifications waived and become acting or whatever the term was instead of leaving, leaving the Director's discretion is for, right now, it stands it's for everybody. I don't agree with that. I don't think he should be able to waive the requirements for superintendent, principal, or vice principal.
Okay, so that's the piece, is the discretion for those, for those three positions. It's not that you're saying that he can, that the discretion can stay for the remainder of the positions, just not principal, vice principal, and superintendent.
That's right. That's what I'm proposing first.
Okay.
What I think that Trustee Antumasi and O'Brien also alluded to.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Now I understand that. And I think Director Daley, you have a comment?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. It's, well, it's unlikely at the superintendent... It's, well, it's unlikely at the superintendent and principal level that the discretion would be needed. It, it probably is, would be more frequent, and it would still be infrequent, at the VP level. Both at elementary and secondary, that's typically a position that it kind of ebbs and flows in terms of people applying to the position. We're in pretty good shape right now. A number of years ago, we, we, it did ebb a little bit. So in the case of a vice principal, there could be a situation where they might have completed part one and in progress with part two. As I said, the, the situation doesn't present itself very often, but it can present itself. And then we, we kind of run the danger of having a school potentially without that additional support. If we think about, for example, we're in pretty uncommon times right now, but typically if we had a spot to fill at either the elementary or secondary level, we could rely on retired administrators to kind of fill that gap. Not surprisingly, that's not necessarily the most attractive position right now, considering the, the kind of the current health environment we're in. So we could be, it's possible we, we could be caught in a situation where we have somebody who's close to completing all the qualifications, but then we can't put them in that position. So that's really, I think, what that clause is in there for, for fairly unique circumstances.
Thank you, Director Daley. Does that answer your question, trustee Caraballa?
Thank you, I did appreciate that. So I mean, I, I could be firm then with the superintendent and principal, and the vice principals then could be more flexible with that.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Caraballa. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this question would be to executive officer O'Hare or, or Director Daley. The, the attention of this policy is that we're temporarily waiving or amending the requirement, but the candidate, I'm assuming, would still have to fulfill those courses in a, in a short period of time. Is that a correct assumption?
Superintendent O'Hare?
Yes, and through the, the chair, absolutely. So we would be expecting and we'd be following up, you know, and ensure that all of the necessary qualifications are completed in short order. And again, on the few occasions when, you know, this has happened, that the person is actively enrolled in it and, and is completing the course.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, does that answer your question?
It does answer my question. So in, in my opinion, having been on the superintendent hiring committee, there's many, many eyes looking at this, and, and if we have in the principal or vice principal hiring pool, three superintendents, the executive officer of HR, and the director, I'm not worried about nepotism, I'm not worried about anything nefarious, you know? We, we can't create policies based on the assumption that people operate in bad faith. They're, they're always established, established based on the fact that people operate in, in good faith. And then, you know, it's, it's our role as trustees and overseers and stewards to hold those people accountable for the decisions they make. So if we remove that element of their position, and everything has to be approved by trustees, then they can't be held accountable for the performance in their jobs. And that's problematic of senior managers.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Do you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Antumasi, you have the floor.
So if we go to the bullet on page 14, the first bullet, candidates must have the necessary qualifications as determined by the board. We are the, we are the board, and we determine what the qualifications are. If we go to progressive positions or leadership positions, that is advertised each time we look for the vice principals, principals, and, and superintendents, it's established there what the requirements are. My point, going back to the beginning, and, and relative to this particular policy, this policy does not address the qualification piece of the, of, of what we're trying to, of giving discretion to the, to the secretary. The requirement to be a principal is spelled out, the requirement to be a superintendent is spelled out. As such, if we pass this particular policy as written, it would be totally contradictory to what we, as trustees, determine the qualifications to be. So what we're really saying is, okay, Secretary Daley, we are going to give you discretion of removing all the necessary qualifications, which under the Education Act, Madam Chair, would be a contravention.
Thank you, trustee Antumasi. Do you have an actual question? Okay.
Clarify the situation.
Moving on to trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. You know, I can't help thinking that we're trying to kill a fly with a, with a, with a sledgehammer, because we're trying to deal, we're trying to deal with an exceptions. So I'd, I'd have a very simple question for Director Daley. And would it be a problem if, in the rare times that we have to make exceptions, board and say, I need to make an exception because of this? And if all the good reasons are there, and fully justified, chances are that that exception would be made? Rather than make, than, than incorporate a blanket statement like this, that in effect, first of all, there, there, it's contradictory with, with bullet one, and secondly, I think it, it opens, it gives you, it gives a secretary a lot of leeway to make those exceptions and not bring them back to the board. So.
Trustee DeRosa, if you look at the bullet right here, I don't know if you can see, it actually does already state that. It says, the director of education will adhere to administrative procedure VI dash 28, selection and appointment of positions of academic administrative responsibilities to implement this policy, and will make regular reports regarding the implementation of this policy, including any instances where qualifications and requirements have been waived or amended.
So, Madam Chair, I understand that that particular bullet puts an onus, an onus for reporting, but I'd like, I'd like for Director Daley to, to answer the simple question. What would be the problem with coming to the board and asking the board to deal with the rare exceptions in this, in this particular case, rather than include this, this clause? Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I, I think that the bullet that trustee Guzzo referred to, in fact, does say that the director, whoever that would be, would come to the board to explain why the exception was made. I think there's a difference between bringing information to the board for their awareness and asking the board to hire principals or vice principals. And our policy does not, does not allow that.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
No, Madam Chair, I'm, I got the answer I wanted, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say to the refer, reference about being nefarious or nepotism, I think it's more in injustice that we stick to that injustice, and what's, that the, the people that come as qualified candidates do have those qualifications intact and ready to go, as I said, for the superintendent and principal. So I'd like to make an amendment, since we're just talking about this now in circles, and we can see, I'd like to make an amendment that, I guess, super, well, to reflect what I've been saying, so do we just take out superintendent and principal and put them, or do we add in the bullet where the director, the director of education, to have the discretion to waive or amend the qualifications and requirements, except for, well, at the end, we could say, except for superintendent and principals, that there they cannot, or just have no discretion? And maybe somebody can help me out?
Do we have a second or two? Sorry, so.
Have we finished discussion, Madam Chair?
Well, she has a motion on the table, trustee DeRosa, and you're out of order. So trustee Caraballa has the floor, and I'm acknowledging her motion. So her motion is, is to add in on bullet four on page 17, that it says, that we would add, except for superintendents and principals. Do I have a second or two to her motion?
I'll second the motion.
Trustee Antumasi, I will, I will go back into the queue in regards to, to follow-up. Trustee O'Brien, for.
Yes, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I just want to make it clear, my suggestion was that the hiring is to be brought to the board for approval, just to vote. No sitting on, on interview panels, just instead of information item in camera, that they be brought as an action item in camera. That was my suggestion. I just want to say that for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Hearn Zernota, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So my first statement's going to be, I'm going to disagree agreeably with most of what we've, everyone's been speaking about. I think in a perfect world, yes, black and white, you know, everything's in writing, but in the real world, and, and I can only speak to my 28 years in, in, in public and private, I have a little bit of wiggle room. If you want the operation, I'll be at a school board or another operation to run smoothly and protect, in our case, the teachers and the children by having the right people in the right jobs. I think it's already been spoke to that the individuals that would be in this gray area would already be going towards their certification. So I please, I caution all of us to be careful how much control we want over this process, because I don't want it to backfire on our entire school board, and our system, and our children, and our teachers, et cetera. So that's my soapbox for tonight.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Zernota. Do you have a follow-up or a question?
No, I just, I warrant how much control we want over these processes. I, I think we can leave it up to our director and our senior staff to make these decisions. That's why they're in the role they are.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to pass.
Thank you, trustee Antumasi, you have the floor.
So I echo trustee O'Hearn Zernota's sentiments. However, I do want to point out to everyone, that what happens if the candidate that gets pulled without having the requirements, he or she does not complete the rest of their course requirements in a timely basis? We could have a person that could be in the position for two or three years before they complete the requirement, which then has other people that have the requirements completed not be very happy with advancing someone that does not have their qualifications. So yes, I would caution everybody that we allow that process to happen, because discretionary power goes against the policy that we are currently reviewing, simply because it's the board's role to set the policies. And then you're saying to, to the director, the secretary-director to the board, well, it's okay, we've got the qualifications, but we're going to let you make the final decision. That's contradictory to the, the whole Education Act. The Education Act is very, spells out everything. Everything should follow in a certain format, and we're preempting that. So are we next going to say we no longer need a parish or a priest's letter of reference? Where does it stop that we're going to say, no, we don't need that, we're going to waive this, and we're going to waive that? I think that the policy has.
Thank you, trustee Antumasi, you got cut off, but do you actually have a question?
Like everyone else, Madam Chair, I'm making comments based on the discussion at hand, which speaks to a policy which contradicts itself.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor? And then we're gonna, I think we're gonna wrap this up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to direct the question to Director Daley. Given that, you know, career-minded, career-minded staff who are ambitious and are operating within a, a set of rules in order to get ahead and fulfill their, their career ambitions, how do you think this general rule will impact their motivation, knowing that exceptions could be made along the way?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. I think career-minded people would be apprised of the policy and know that it's a possibility. I think it's also important to note that we could find ourselves in a situation where people might be put in a pool, under the understanding that they'll complete their qualifications. It might be the only candidates we have. So in fact, it wouldn't be the case of choosing someone who's fully qualified, it could be choosing between two or three candidates who are on their way to being qualified.
Do you have a follow-up, trustee DeRosa?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to make a point that if, if a particular teacher or employee puts themselves on a career track with the hope of meeting all the qualifications and following all the rules, and knowing the possibility in the back of their mind that exceptions could be made when his turn, his or her turn comes, I wouldn't think that that's particularly a motivating, a motivating situation. This is, we, I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to deal with the exception. This is an overreaching, reaching inclusion in this possible, in this policy. And it doesn't deal with the exception, it, it just opens, it's too much of a blind check, actually, in fewer words. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa, you will have the last comment, and then we'll move on.
That's right, thank you. So I just want to say that because these are high leadership positions, principal and superintendent, that we should be expecting them to have their full qualifications. I don't think this would backfire, I think it is due diligence and respect for, and justice to those who have their qualifications and are ready. And so that's why I added that ending to the phrase, to exclude the wave, the, the discretion to waive for principals and superintendents. I hope that's clear. And I guess in that regard, with the positions of responsibility, that the application and scope, would it follow that? Okay, I'm not sure. Okay, if that stays there, superintendent, principal, well, we have a week also to reflect.
Well, actually, sorry, trustee Caraballa, this is where the discussion needs to happen, is here at policy. Really, when we get to the board table, the idea is, is this is the group that works on it and comes to a consensus, and the process should really just be not to rediscuss policy at the board table.
I respectfully disagree, trustee Guzzo. The, the, the board meeting is a public forum, and.
So with this, trustee Caraballa, this is.
But that's the legally binding one, and oftentimes on reflection, we can have another idea to put forward and bring to our trustee colleagues that is fair. And I, so anyways, I will just leave it right now with my amendment the way it is. And I, so anyways, I will just leave it right now with my amendment the way it is. So, and I have a second, and as you say, we'll wrap it up.
So, that being said, and just for clarification, we are a Committee of the Whole, so it is a legal binding committee that brings recommendations to the Board. That being said, we will go forward and we will do a recorded.
There's no such thing, it's point of order.
I'm sorry.
Binding in a.
I'm, you know, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm going to respectfully ask that we manage this and not interrupt. We've done really well so far, not.
I use my point of order, Madam Chair.
You don't have a point of order. Again, I'm going to say. Trustee Antomasi.
I have the floor. I've stated the point of order. The point of order is that you made a statement that this is a legal and binding, you're in a.
Trustee Antomasi, you do not have a point of order, and I would ask that you refrain from yelling into the phone, I mean, into the computer, because it is very disruptive and it's very hard and difficult to hear you. If you have a point of order, like we do in Board Meetings, state what bylaw or what part of the Education Act has been violated, and I will make a ruling. That being said.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, please speak clearly. You're talking about the Education Act as being a point of order? Where is that written in our bylaws?
Trustee Antomasi, what is your point of order?
My point of order is.
State your actual point of order.
That a committee meeting, that a committee meeting is legal and binding process. The only thing a committee meeting does is refers the matter up to the Board. The only legal entity at the Board, which is the corporate structure, is the regular Board Meeting. This is a committee meeting, ma'am.
It's a meeting of the whole, Trustee Antomasi, and I would ask that you not interrupt by yelling into the computer again. It is disrespectful, and nobody has behaved this way so far in this meeting. So, I'd ask that you do not do that.
People are moving. I keep getting moved to mute it, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antomasi, again, you do not have the floor unfettered. So, we're moving on. We are now going to go to a vote with the proposal, with the proposed amendment that Trustee Caraballa brought forward. Trustee Agnew.
No.
Opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the changes that Trustee Caraballa.
I am opposed.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa.
Madam Chair, can you please clarify what I'm being asked to vote on?
This is the changes that Trustee Caraballa has brought forward, which is with the exception of Superintendents and Principals.
Are we including Vice Principals in there?
Nope, that was not part of what she brought forward.
What's the con?
So, it's under Bullet Four, under requirements, and we're adding in the line, except for Superintendents and Principals.
Can I make an amendment to that, Madam Chair?
We're not at this point, we're at a vote. We've already started the vote on this. You can after this is done.
I'm in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Caraballa.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Gubert.
In favor.
Okay, so the change goes ahead, so now it won't be on the entire policy, any other, actually, we've closed it, so we will go forward now with the vote on the policy to be presented to the meeting. Trustee Agnew.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Did the change carry?
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just one second. Okay, so now we're voting on the policy to be brought forward to the next meeting on October twentieth. Trustee Agnew, opposed. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Caraballa.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Gubert.
In favor.
So, the policy will be brought forward to the next meeting. Moving on now to Item four point four, Policy III-I-I dash one-four, Employee Conduct. Can I get somebody to move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy III-I-I dash one-four Employee Conduct Code of Conduct be forwarded along with amendments to the October twentieth, twenty twenty, regular Board Meeting for approval? Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Trustee Agnew.
O'Brien seconded.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. And I will hand this to Director Daley. Oh, no, sorry, Superintendent O'Hara, if you want to speak to this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Excuse me. This policy has been around since two thousand and four, and certainly when it was developed, it was a compilation of many different policies. What we have tried to do here is streamline the policy so that it's not repeating large sections of the workplace discrimination, harassment, and the workplace violence policy. And so, you've seen essentially those pieces, those definitions removed. At the same time, it does speak to those policies in general terms, both in its listing and under its principles. Subject to any other questions, that's all.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Hara. Trustee Caraballa, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, that was a mistake from the last policy. I'll, I'll, don't have something right yet.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
Against.
Trustee Caraballa.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Gubert.
In favor.
Okay, the policy will be brought forward to the next policy meeting of October twenty twenty twenty. That's it for our action items. Now, we're going to move on to discussion items. Item five point one, Board Correspondence. I had a few trustees reach out and ask that this be added to the agenda.
Madam Chair, can I raise a point of privilege, Madam Chair?
Sure.
With respect to all the items under discussion, I would like to make the point that it would been, it would have been, I'm a little remiss to try to participate constructively in, in the discussion of these items, because I've received, or the trustees have received, no information whatsoever. So, we're, we're really trying to, we're going to go on the basis of what we're told here without any, having had the opportunity for proper reflection. So, that, that, that becomes problematic for me personally, and I would suspect some others as well, to try to represent to my constituents appropriately with the proper questions and with the proper nuances of what, of what the topics are all about.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Trustee DeRosa. I appreciate you raising a point of privilege, but just so you understand, it is only a discussion item, there's no decisions made here. These are items that trustees, your fellow, I'm, I'm speaking, Trustee DeRosa, so I'd ask that you let me finish, that, that have been brought forward, just that, to have a discussion about either creating a new policy or whether a new policy should be created. So, that's why it's under discussion item and not as an information item. If it had come in the form of an information item, that would mean that there's something already there to be tabled in the following meeting as an action item, but that's actually not what this is. So.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, thank you for acknowledging my point of privilege. I just want to make the point that the degree of conversation and input into this discussion is somewhat limited, given the fact that we've been provided no background whatsoever. And I would like to end the day. Thank you.
Okay, and, and your point of privilege noted. However, there is nothing to provide you at this point, because it's simply at the preliminary point where it's a discussion. So, that being said.
I was just trying to make the point, point of privilege. Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, I heard you, and I acknowledged it. We're moving on. So, under Board Correspondence, there was a few trustees who had brought this forward and asked to it be brought forward as a discussion item, in that there is no existing policy that deals with correspondence. So, the question is, is there an appetite to maybe create a new policy? And if so, we need to look at it, and somebody needs to undertake that and work with staff so that we can bring it back and actually have a wholesome discussion to Trustee DeRosa's point of privilege. Trustee Antomasi, we'll start with you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Discussion Item five point one to five point four needs some background information for us to discuss. I therefore would put a motion on the table that we remand this to the next policy meeting, simply because I, as a trustee, I cannot address any of this without any advance notice for some background information. What is the discussion going to be? What are the points to be discussed? What are the parameters of the discussion? So, can I have, I'm asking for a second to remove information.
Here we go.
Discussion Items five point one to five point four.
Let me guess who's going to second it. Sorry, just, just for clarification, Trustee Antomasi, the Bylaw Working Group has already been discussed, there's actually a motion, so all that information has been provided to all of the trustees. This is an item that is just a follow-up to see about setting dates for, number one. Number two, I just.
I beg to differ. The Bylaw.
Stop.
We're, we're a Committee of the Whole.
Stop. This is, we're not going to proceed this way. I am not going to conduct a meeting where people are talking over each other and interrupting. It's not fair to our, our stakeholders who are listening in.
I have the floor, Madam Chair.
But actually, you didn't, you stopped, you, you started to act as if you were chair in the meeting and said you wanted a second. Please leave that to me to deal with, Trustee Antomasi. Now, if you're going to.
I put a motion on the table, I'm asking for.
Please repeat your motion, and you don't get to ask for the second.
My motion is as follows. Agenda Item number five, Discussion Items five point one, five point two, five point three, and five point four, be remanded to the next Board Meeting due to the fact that we lack background information and we have not been able to prepare to address these particular items fully. And I draw your attention specifically to five point four, whereby Bylaw Working Group, we do not have a Bylaw Working Group. What we do have is an ad hoc committee that is currently reviewing the bylaws.
Please.
Do we have a second to Trustee Antomasi's?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Trustee DeRosa seconds it, and then I will hand the floor over to Trustee Murphy. And, and we're just going to grab the motion in regards to the Bylaw Working Group and bring that up. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Okay. I, where to start? Yeah, discussion items are just after discussion items. So, a few times tonight, people have used the term Committee of the Whole, and the Committee of the Whole is, is where as a group, we can get together and openly discuss ideas, opinions, in the effort of coming to consensus that supports student achievement. That's, that's just the intention. I, I think, you know, if you ask me, do I have an opinion on, on Board Correspondence? Yes, I would love to be able to share that with people. It doesn't mean that we're going to formulate a policy tonight. It means that I have a will and a desire to discuss my opinions, because I think it will benefit the Board and as a result, student achievement, as I do with all of the other points. So, to me, I don't, I don't really understand why we can't have frank and open discussions to, with the desire of, of coming to a consensus as a group. And consensus doesn't mean what I think. It consensus means that we, we all put our opinions and, and ideas together, and we ask staff for their opinion and the people who have many, many years' experience in these, in these areas. And then we come up with something that, that makes sense for us. So, you know, that, that wasn't the reason why I had my hand up, but since there's a motion on the table, that's why I made this, I made this comment. I'd be more than happy to have open discussions on, on all four items.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. And as I prefaced, when I started on Item five point one, was to see if there was a consensus and an appetite in, in creating policies in regards to this. And in past, when trustees have brought new policies forward, they do not go to the Board first, that is not the process. They come here as information items, and then it's discussed, and then it comes as an action item. So, I'm moving on to Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Madam Chair, I was in the queue. My question was regarding Item five point one, sorry, regarding the, yeah, regarding five point one. However, this, Trustee Antomasi put up the motion to, to defer this, and as I hear the motion, it talks to me about moving Item five point one to five point four to the next Board Meeting. So, if we recap and take a look at, and listen to the, the conversation that we had, the motion talks to moving this to the next Board Meeting. So, my question is, we are in policy and we are talking about this, we're having a discussion here, why do we need to move this to the next Board Meeting? The, the motion itself is flawed, Madam Chair.
I, I, it's not, it's not my motion, Trustee Duarte, so if you'd like, Trustee Antomasi can speak to why the next Board Meeting. And I would ask that Trustee Antomasi stick to only answering the question, because Trustee Duarte still has the floor.
Thank you, Madam.
I will respond to that question. I stated at the next Policy Committee Meeting, these are discussion items to derive new policies from, which means that it would be the next Policy Meeting.
Okay, so are you revising your, 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 your motion? Sorry, yes, Trustee Duarte.
Madam Chair, I heard, I listened very carefully, and if you, it's on recorded on video, it's on recorded on.
And we, and we wrote it down here, Trustee Duarte.
Thank you.
That is what he stated in his, his motion. So, Trustee Duarte, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, my question was regarding the Board Correspondence and new policy, but we can talk about it after the motion. I'll come back in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Caraballa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in the past, you know, when there was discussion items, we had a name beside it as to who's bringing that discussion forward. And I think it would certainly be helpful that we have some indication of what it's about, so that we're not like phoning everybody, like who.
Ask her.
So, and, but the five point four, the Bylaw Working Group, as I put that motion forward that, and it passed, that we have a bylaw, an ad hoc bylaw committee, an ad hoc bylaw review committee, and it was approved. And so, the next step for that is really that we, at the Board as an action item, it is established, and the Chair is chosen, and dates are put forward. So, I'm not understanding why that's here.
Sorry, sorry, Trustee Caraballa, I can answer that. I actually have your motion in front of me, and it says that a working committee reviewing the Halton Catholic District School Board procedural bylaws as an ad hoc slash standing bylaw review committee comprising of all trustees. So, that means it's already been established as an action item, so we just need to call a meeting. And so, by adding it here, it was simply giving everybody the opportunity to, to ask how we wanted to proceed in starting those meetings, because originally, we had talked about adding them on. Because originally, we had talked about adding them onto policy in advance because it is a committee of all of us. So bylaw working group, ad hoc committee, all of those, all of that is used in the motion. So um, and to go back to your point on who asked for what in discussion items, I'll take responsibility for that because I had several requests for board correspondence and the COVID health, um, that was actually your item brought forward and 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 that's my fault for not providing that to Rosie to add into the agenda. So I will own that. I made a mistake. I apologize. However, we have never had discussion items. We have never had detailed information provided. This is just that. It's a discussion if we want to proceed with a new policy and who will champion it, as I said, in in originally. Do do we have a consensus for an appetite to go forward with this? It's the start of it is a discussion. Then what happens is somebody puts it together. Most trustees who have put forward a new policy know what the process is. They give the background, they give the policy, they're given a template to create the policy. They send it in, it gets added to the agenda, and then it goes in as an information item. Then the following meeting, it goes on as an action item. So we haven't even gotten to the point where it's at an information item yet. So I think what we should do is I will go through this because I think trustee DeRosa has this and then we'll vote on whether or not we're going to to even go forward with this because we're spending a lot of time on an item that we might not even discuss.
Um, may I, okay, trustee, uh, Madam Chair. My motion from May nineteenth, and you have it in front of you, and it made it an ad hoc uh standing bylaw review committee, so ad hoc bylaw review committee. So it shouldn't be called a bylaw working group. Because.
Okay, so we can change the semantics and we can change what it is. We had the opportunity to change that at the beginning of the agenda and we didn't. So we can change that it says here in in our in our minutes. We can change that we referenced it as the ad hoc slash standing bylaw review committee. It's, it doesn't change what the committee's goal is and what it is and what what needs to be done. And at the end of the day, if the trustees don't want to get moving on it, we don't have to. We can leave it. So that's all that this is about, and that's why it's a discussion.
Well, and that really it should be happening at the board meeting.
But it doesn't because it was already an action item. It needs to just be called is actually how how ad hoc committees work. They don't go back to the board to be called. It's already been passed. So that being said, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just, you know, like uh, like my esteemed colleague, um, trustee Murphy, I too um am in favor of vigorous debate. But I'm in favor of vigorous informed debate. So I just want to make the point. And maybe this is some lesson we take for the future is that if we want fruitful and vigorous debate, no matter how long it might take, it would be advantageous for everybody to receive some information ahead of time. And this is what this discussion is all about. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take this to a vote. Uh, so we are voting on trustee Yan Tomasi's uh motion, which is, he made a motion that discussion items five point one to five point four be remanded due to the fact that we have no background information to our next board meeting. So I will start with trustee Agnew. Trustee DeRosa.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Duert.
Opposed.
Trustee Yan Tomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Caraballa.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Opposed.
Trustee Gubert.
In favor.
Trustee Guzo is opposed. We will go forward with the discussion items. So that being said, I had a couple of trustees who brought forward the item that we were just talking about, which is board correspondence. So the question is, is there an appetite to do this? The trustees that brought it forward really didn't give any information except for please add it to the agenda. Um, so that's what we've done here. So is there an appetite to create a policy for board correspondence? And if so, um, does somebody want to take that on?
Madam Chair, I was in the queue, if you don't mind.
Oh, sorry, you, I missed you there. Sorry, trustee Duert, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you. Uh, my question was on on item five point one, board correspondence regarding new policy. Uh, we have a bylaw which talks about board correspondence. Uh, I'm not sure why this item has landed here. If we start to uh following the bylaw the way it is written and the way it has been implemented in the past, I'm just wondering why we need a new policy. If we have not followed it, we made a mistake. We can admit it and move on, but do we really need a new policy? We we have been having board correspondences forever in the past uh and have things have been moving very smoothly. So uh, my question is, did we make a mistake? Did we acknowledge it and move forward? Or do we need a new policy? I, in my opinion, we don't need a new policy.
Thank you, trustee Duert. Um, I I do know that I saw some communication and I and I don't believe that we, as a board, have actually said that this is, this is, it was alluded to that this was a one off. So um, but I think I think we've had some stakeholders ask for more detail.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think simply due to the fact that we have uh more than one stakeholder, multiple stakeholders, uh, asking for clear direction and a clear understanding on on what our policy is, that it would um, would behoove us to investigate. Uh, trustee Du.
Trusty, trustee Murphy, we're losing you there. Trustee Murphy.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, we lost him. Trustee Duert, just give me a second. I'm trying to get him back here.
Did you hear?
Now we can hear you, trustee Murphy. We lost you at trustee Du.
I had the, I had to take my headphones off. Uh, but hopefully I don't get any. Um, I think trustee Duert made a good point. See, in our, clear, um, was, there was some ambiguity, um, and I think it's uh, it's a valid. And and they're confused as to our uh, our policy, then it it would seem, it would beg that uh, that we need to either make it clearer through our bylaws or through a policy, and that's that's kind of why we're having this discussion. So either way, I think it's important that um, we look at it, understand it, and come up with a consensus on how we want to handle correspondence moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella, you were one of the trustees who brought this forward. Do you want to speak to why you wanted decided to discussion item?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Um, I do think, I mean, I've been here as a trustee for six years, and over the six years, I've seen a lot of um correspondence and a lot of stricter rules, less stricter rules, timeframes, uh, parents' letters being rejected because um, it wasn't uh addressed to the right person. Um, that was previous to Director Daley and so um, and now with the recently, uh, there was quite a lot of correspondence and there's these new expectations perhaps and we, people asking for their letters to be read out. I think we have to really be clear and make it easy for parents to find out how they can express their opinion through a correspondence uh to the board, not necessarily delegating, and um, find it easily and see what the expectations are so that they're not disappointed or expecting something, uh, that they know what the rules are. And this honors all the people who follow the rules. So, and I mean, and it can encompass, it can encompass not just uh letters from parents, but organizations, um, you know, various. We'll explore all the different things that um, I'm sure Rosie comes, can also add her experience there with receiving correspondence. So I I'm very much in favor of having a policy on correspondence.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So just a question. I'm not uh, I'm not opposed um to taking a look at um developing some consistency with respect to um, the submission of correspondence and how that correspondence is dealt with and and all the, you know, everything that goes with that. I'm just wondering, since it is a bylaw currently, that we do have a correspondence piece to our bylaw and that we are going to have, uh, we are reviewing our bylaws, however you want to call it, and what fashion we're reviewing them, but we are going through that process. And I'm just wondering if that is the opportunity for us to further expand on that bylaw as it pertains to board correspondence um, and just put some of these details uh into that bylaw, um, rather than creating a a whole new policy. Um, just because we're already there and um, it's something that we could, you know, probably quite easily um, look at doing. So I just wondered if that was something for consideration.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Do you have a follow up?
I do not.
Trustee Duert, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, uh, just what trustee Agnew just said, uh, yeah, kind of makes sense. We already have some of that uh, detailed. We could uh, add some more uh con- content to that part and make it even more clearer so that everybody understands. I I would agree with that. Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there's no more discussion, then I, maybe my suggestion would be is, um, I don't hear anybody else. If there is somebody who wants to champion uh putting together a policy and bringing it forward, um, please just reach out and we can send you a template and uh it can be brought forward to a policy meeting as long as it's uh received with uh before the agenda is set.
Or can we just do?
Um, or it can be brought, it can be brought to the board.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did we reach a consensus that we need a policy?
We didn't. Nobody else is speaking up. Trustee Duert, you have said, you, Brenda, and uh, sorry, you, trustee Agnew and trustee Murphy have have alluded to keeping it within the bylaws. And I think trustee Carabella thinks that a a policy would work. I haven't heard from anybody else. Um, you know, it's a discussion item and I don't want to force anybody to uh considering, you know, that people didn't feel comfortable talking about this.
Madam Chair.
I can. Yes, trustee, trustee DeRosa, I just saw your hand. You gotta give me a second to acknowledge you. Okay. Trustee DeRosa, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I wouldn't uh, I wouldn't expect uh out of this discussion, whatever discussion is taking place, that any conclusions, conclusions come out of uh hard fact conclusions moving forward, come out of this discussion. A discussion is a discussion. I'm happy, uh, I'm I'm happy to contribute where I can. Um, but uh, I wouldn't expect that any any conclusions of uh of any sort uh come out of this, this exercise. Regardless of whether people chime in and people don't chime in, uh, the fact that somebody is silent at the table doesn't doesn't mean that they're acquiescing. And uh, I think that would be a dangerous conclusion to come to. Thank you.
So trustee DeRosa, I I don't appreciate what you just implied there. What I said was is that nobody's weighing in, so I will leave it up to trustees to make a decision on whether or not they choose to do it through the bylaw ad hoc committee or if they choose to bring forward a policy, which is within their rights, which is not coming to any type of consensus because then everybody has given an opinion. So actually, what I'm doing, what I have, I have the floor.
And you shouldn't take it that way.
Well, but if, well, okay, trustee DeRosa, I'm gonna move on. Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So, no, I agree. I think we need some parameters as far as board correspondence for what we just went through. There was a lot of questions. Yeah, I felt like there wasn't an avenue for stakeholders, you know, a clear picture. But if we do already have it in the bylaws, it kind of makes sense to me to put the two together and maybe um, expand the bylaw or add to it whatever we need to help a clarity for the individuals that need to come forward with their correspondence.
Thank you, uh, trustee O'Hern Zernota. Trustee Caraballa, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I find with that um is, you know, um, if it's part of bylaws, there's not really that much room. Like, our bylaws are are quite short. And I I think it would be hard for parents to find that. I find if it's under the policies of correspondence, it's so much clearer and uh for parents to find it. I don't think I would go looking in the bylaws to find out how to write a letter to the board. So I would prefer it as a policy. It's just more clear. I think it can be succinct in itself and our bylaws can refer to the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa. Uh, anybody else have any comments or want to add to the discussion? So I I don't think we have a consensus here, but that being said, it does not exclude trustees from bringing forward a policy at any time. So I appreciate the discussion. So again, as I stated earlier, should somebody decide that they want to bring forward a policy, please just feel free to reach out and we will ensure that they get uh a template and they can bring it forward in the proper channels. We're gonna move on to item five point two, COVID health and safety, new policy and procedure. Trustee Caraballa, I'm gonna hand this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this I I asked to bring forward. Um, and I would like that we do consider and talk about having a policy on COVID for the management of COVID. Um, and put all, put everything under an umbrella of a policy again for easy access for parents, easy clarity, um, and for them to be informed and know what to do, what's happening. We we receive a different board reports, updates. We get updates. Um, some are shared, some some aren't, some could be shared, but what's the venue for it? So I would like to propose that um, we make a policy that puts everything in one place for clarity for parents. And also, um, um, just to have that, it's it's, I don't know if I, we go into in camera. I don't want to, you know, I want to allude to the uh legal opinion letter that uh spoke about requiring uh school boards to develop, adapt, and maintain school policies to manage risks associated with COVID nineteen. Um, I think I can say that. Um, that's my main concern as well is to have our board compliant and following all the things, which we are, uh, but to have it, to have, to have it as a policy.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa. Trustee Duert, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. Again, uh, this uh, this po- policy that is being proposed, uh, I asked a few questions to to Secretary Daley and he did respond that we are in compliance of everything. Uh, so we must be having uh everything documented somewhere. So my question would be to to Secretary Daley, if I can put the question, and ask him if we uh, we are meeting all the requirements of the ministry guidelines, the uh, health and health. Uh, and everything has been documented in some policy and procedure. Uh, have you documented everything? And specifically, do we need another policy, especially for COVID, and what benefit it will bring to the board?
Director Daley.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. Um, I I don't, I don't personally see the need for an additional policy. Um, the the um, plans that we have put in place are exactly the plans outlined by both the ministry and our local public health. Um, so I I I'm not sure I see the need for a policy specific to COVID nineteen uh protocols because they would in fact be very specific to this particular instance. Uh, so um, yeah, I do believe that we are, we have followed the direction that we've received both from the Ministry of Education, uh, the Ministry of Education, Ministry of Health, and our own local public health. That's how we developed our um, our return to school plan.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, I have a follow up. Another question that trustee Caraballa made was it's difficult for parents to kind of find the information. So again, question to Secretary Daley, is there a way we can make it easier for parents to locate uh this particular policies on the website, maybe in the in the back to school section or some other section of our website? Is there a way we can make it easier for parents to easily access all the COVID information that we have that they're implementing? Sorry.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. I I'm not sure how it could be much easier. Um, all of our return to school protocols, information, correspondence is all. our return to school protocols, information, correspondence is all on kind of a one-stop-shop under return to school plan. It's fairly well organized, I would argue, under health and safety, mental health and wellness, learning and instruction, et cetera, et cetera. That's where everything is housed. To be quite honest, I would think parents would be more likely to go there than they would be to go to something that's listed in one of our, our board's 30 or 40 policies.
Thank you, Secretary Daley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Trusty Duarte, Trusty Agnew, you have the floor.
So just to echo what Trusty Duarte has said is that, you know, I, I feel confident in the response that Director Daley has given with respect to how we're currently amending as we go and being responsive to the requirements as public health releases them and as the ministry changes them. You know, my fear in putting a specific COVID policy around this is that the situation is consistently evolving. You know, we do have health and safety policies and procedures that this would fall under. So, you know, I just, I, I don't know if it's relevant for us to need a specific COVID policy, again, when we are sort of dealing with the COVID piece and how that is evolving and changing and we're updating that again as we need to, dependent on the direction we're getting from the various ministries. And then many of those items do fall in line with our current health and safety. But I just think if you go in and you change, if you go in and create a COVID policy, it's, it could possibly be outdated from, from day to day. And then that's not helpful either, I don't think, for parents to keep track of that and to try to find where that is and to try to keep up to date with that versus the way we're handling it right now, which is a specific, you know, COVID piece that is changing as we go. So I just don't know that there's a need for a specific COVID health and safety policy and accompanying procedure. It seems to be working well the way that it is.
Thank you, Trusty Agnew. I, I just need to put a pause. I need five minutes. It's 8:59 on my clock. We'll return at 9:05. Okay? We'll, we'll resume exactly where we are in the queue. So I apologize, but we just need to take five minutes.
So we can, if we get to that on the item, we can, we can bring that up under in camera.
Well, sorry through you, Madam Chair. I believe we could just go in camera now and discuss the opinion and then come out of in camera and
Okay, sure. Just give me one second and we'll go offline and then we'll And then we might actually have to set up a, we have to leave this and set up a new teams?
Okay.
So while we do that, I guess we'll just wait for Yeah, can we continue, can we continue the discussion while we're waiting? Andrea? Okay. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Madam That's okay. Sorry, thank you through you, Madam Chair. Just a question for trustee Ian Tomasi because now I'm, you know, obviously intrigued. So do you have that? Like do you, so trustee Ian Tomasi, can you provide that specific documentation where to, to to just confirm what it is that you said with respect to the requirements on having to weave in those specific items into a policy?
So all directives, it's under the Education Act. I'm afraid I don't have the Act in front of me. Anything that's handed down, whether it be curriculum, whether it be health and safety, whether it be equity and inclusion, that gets sent down to us by the ministry, boards are required to turn them into policy to fit their constituency. That's a fact. It's not a statement. I can provide the actual parts of the Act if that's what you're looking for, but I can do that at a later date.
Go ahead.
Follow up, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
So thank you, trustee Ian. Is that handled then, if that is in fact, if you, if you could supply me with that information from the Education Act, that would be helpful, just so we have that on a go-forward basis should we ever need that again. But how is that handled then with an evolving pandemic that is consistently changing and the, and the information is changing almost on a daily basis perhaps? So is that accounted for in the Education Act? Do they speak specifically to a situation like this?
So through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Agnew. So as we do with all policies, they're updated and the reason policies are updated is to reflect the changes in the weather or the changes in whatever is happening around us. Policies are not written in stone. They are ever-evolving. So once you establish a policy, you change it as we have the ones previously to reflect the changing conditions.
Thank you, trustee Ian Tomasi. I actually have a question too to follow up on that. So I'm, I'm also concerned in the sense that well, you would have participated in the chair meeting, I think it was today, meeting with all the chairs, with the minister and, and the health, health advisors that participated in that and the protocols change and then we've seen them change already several times and my understanding is they're going to be changing again this week. How would you suggest that as a board, we navigate those changes and that they don't already fall under our occupational health and safety guidelines and our pandemic procedures? If I'm not mistaken, I believe that they cover off what needs to be covered off.
Through you, Madam Chair. In response to your question, the same way as the Health Department changes on a day-to-day basis, they review and update the requirements, which has been ever-evolving since March.
Okay, I just, we will now go into camera and, and we can Has the link been sent?
Yeah.
Okay, so the link has been sent to everybody. So if you can leave this teams meeting and for any of our rate payers that are watching, we will be back. Thank you.
All right, and I do apologize that we should have made a motion to go in camera. So we, however, we don't necessarily follow the exact bylaws as the boards, but I do apologize for that. So we are back. So we've completed this discussion on COVID health and safety. We're moving on to item 5.3 now, which is online forms. Trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. So we've seen obviously a lot of things that have gone online during all of this process. You know, with our learning as a result of COVID-19. These are conversations that we've had previously, also in conjunction with going paperless as much as possible. And so this really just comes out of, you know, are we in a position right now to really take a look at the ability for us to move many of our forms that we require parents to fill out and make those online accessible forms? We know that every year, parents get the huge package of forms that come home and obviously they're a necessity. But year over year, there are many complaints that come forward from parents on the number of forms that are required to be filled out. And again, the large package that comes home. And so is there an opportunity for us to take a look at, again, for two reasons? One, for ease of access for parents to have the ability to fill those out online. And second, just to take a look at being good stewards of the environment. So I wanted to have a discussion with my fellow trustees around that piece. I just think in today's day and age, there has to be a way for us to put these numerous forms online. I've actually been really pleased to see that there have been some elements of things that have been used as an example for IEP consultations and some of the other things that are going on that I've seen there is an ability for parents to fill out some of these forms online and send them back for participation in some of these meetings. So I don't see why we couldn't find a way to make those other forms for things like participation in sports or intramurals. You know, the form that goes home to each family confirming information of the student, that we could make some of those online and easily accessible to parents. So just wanted to get feedback from my fellow trustees on that.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Is there any comments? Thoughts? Trustee Carabella?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. That's very interesting. I wouldn't have guessed that from the way it was just online. Now I'm understanding. So I guess I'd like to know what currently is, is there anything online and how does the principal or vice principal collect? If it's all online, then it has to be stored somehow to? And I don't know what we do with those paper online. Do they keep it in the file then in the main office or with the teacher? Or I'm just wondering the logistics of the digital format.
Is that directed to Trustee Agnew, Trustee Carabella?
Well, or as superintendent, who can answer that? Like what, I don't know if Trustee Agnew knows all the ins and outs. If she can answer it, great, but I'm also wondering what's happening at the school level? How does staff see this? Is it going to be helpful as well?
I mean, I can answer really quickly, Trustee Carabella, on the current process. I mean, I know that those forms are printed off by the office staff and they, like I said, those are sent home. So, you know, that's the current process. They're filled out, they're sent back. And then how those, again, as your correct staff would have to respond as to how those reforms are kept. And, you know, I think part of the creation of this policy slash procedure would be if we were to create online forms for parents to utilize for information is where they would be stored. And again, I think that would be something that would have to be logistically worked out as part of this process. That would be my guess. But certainly, I, you know, love to hear from staff on maybe their thoughts on some of those pieces.
Director Daley?
I may be the only staff left. I'd, and I'm speaking without obviously the knowledge of the backend of it and the privacy elements that would all have to be considered, obviously, developing the policy and then the procedure. I'm certainly in general terms in favor of electronic versus paper. If we can get there, we have proved, I think, over the past six months that there are many processes we follow that we can do in an online format because we were really forced to do it. I prefer that we keep going forward rather than going back, always keeping in mind that we have to give, allow options for people where options are necessary. But on the more technical aspects of it, I think we probably have to start looking at it with a staff report to get some more detail. But I'm certainly in favor of less paper and more electronic for lots of reasons.
Okay, so Trustee Agnew or is there, oh, Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I would agree, we have to move forward and we have to move towards online as, you know, efficiencies dictate, reducing paper waste dictates. The process of getting there will not be an easy one as I'm sure anybody who's organized anything and asked for response, whether, you know, the process of having to get to the point where everybody in our society is connected, which isn't yet. So you're going to have to run paper and online at the same time and that's going to be a painful process, but it's a necessary process. You have to go through it. So, yeah, I think seeing a staff report would be great, understanding the intricacies of getting to the point where we have everything online and then obviously addressing the privacy issues, I think, is going to be fundamental also as anything online is. But I think it's, you know, I think we have to set our goal and our site in the future by a certain date we need to be all online, whatever that date is. But I think it's a worthy discussion.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. So Trustee Agnew, Director Daley had mentioned coming back with the staff report. Oh, would that be something that would work and would everybody have an appetite to see that so that we can look to move towards that if that is what the consensus is?
You know, I mean, through you, Madam Chair, I'll speak to that in the sense that, you know, if my fellow trustees are okay with having, you know, some, a result come out of a discussion without that formalized background. I would love to see that since Director Daley has talked about a possible staff report. I'd like to see if we could do a report, again, if the will of the trustees is fine to do that as a result of our discussion this evening.
I would assume that it would be considering in our previous item that we have agreed that a general consensus to have something come out of it and some comparisons done. So unless somebody strongly disagrees, I don't think that there's anything wrong with getting some information on how moving to online, if it's possible, and how it would be possible, and then driving a policy for that. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is very simple to Director Daley. Would this, does this discussion include the discussion of archiving all our existing data that might be on paper right now and putting it online? Because if it does, my, having been involved in conversions like of that nature before, it's quite an undertaking. But if we're talking just about putting fillable forms to facilitate, to facilitate the parents filling them out or anybody else with them, that's a completely different discussion. So I would just like some clarity there because the two projects, if we're including existing archives, that's a completely different set of circumstances and a completely different project.
Thank you, Trustee DeRosa. I don't believe either Trustee Agnew or Director Daley made any mention of archiving, but I'll defer it to Director Daley and Trustee Agnew to clarify.
Sure.
Maybe I'll start. Yeah, I would see them there as two separate things, Trustee DeRosa. So as you do know, we are currently archiving and moving paper to digital in a number of our departments, but I would see this as a separate process from the one that you're referring to.
Thank you.
Trustee Agnew, is that your?
Yeah, I mean, the, my sole purpose behind this discussion with respect to the online forms has come out of the beginning of school every year primarily where there's numerous forms. And from, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Director Daley, but a lot of those are new forms. I mean, it's, you know, every year it's intramural forums. The information has to be new every year or else, I mean, that's why we have to fill them out every year. So I don't think in those situations, that is information that's being archived. Those are packages that go out to each student every year at the beginning of the year to have filled out. So that's, you know, that's what's driving the conversation around this. It wouldn't be any of those archived pieces.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through Madam Chair, so I'd like just some clarity that these forms would be basically the empty forms or blank forms that parents would then fill out and send back in paper form? Or would they fill them out and like scan it and send it back somehow in digital form?
Sorry, Trustee Carabella, Trustee Agnew, your intention behind this was?
Yeah, so to have fillable forms. I mean, that was, that has been the request that's come out from parents is to have a fillable form that's available online and whether that's housed, you know, whether it's a link that's sent out by the school team, whether that's housed on the school website, whether that's housed on ours, but it would be a fillable form. Keeping in mind that there, you know, may be opportunities for parents who would wish to print off that form if that works better for them and fill it out and scan it back. Or if they just simply prefer to print it out, fill it out and actually send it back physically. I don't think we would, you know, deny a parent the ability to do that. But ultimately, I think the idea is to have a fillable form that they fill it online and then they submit that in to whatever, you know, whatever email address or wherever that is to be sent.
Just to further clarify that on that, Trustee Carabella, I'm not sure if you're aware, but every, beginning of every school year, the majority of what's sent home is like a manila envelope full of paperwork that needs to be completed. So really, it's trying to alleviate that piece. So did you have a follow up?
Yes, so just for my own clarification, these fillable forms, thank you for saying that. I missed that word, fillable. I understand how those work. So it only, only that parent can fill it out. So there's, and you know, it's like there's no place to sign, right? Which is often they ask for a signature. But just because it comes from that computer IP address, is that how we make sure it's authentic? Surely in the younger grades in elementary, it's clear, but maybe in secondary, it might be hazy.
I think this is, this is what I think Director Daley would have staff work out to kind of come back, whoever staff, figure that piece out. I think the whole point of just having this discussion was is, is it something that parents have asked for? And how do we feel about moving to this sooner than later? So I don't think that, all of that, Trustee Carabella, like I don't think we can answer any of that. I think staff has to go back and look at it.
No, that's excellent. And I'm glad this discussion brought up these sort of questions so that staff can have an idea of what we need to hear and understand.
All right, thank you. And any further questions on this? Okay, so we're going to move, thank you, Trustee Agnew, moving on to item 5.4. So we'll change what the title of this is. It should have actually said procedural bylaws ad hoc slash, or sorry, ad hoc slash standing bylaw review. So originally, when this motion had come forward, it was in the spirit of starting prior to the policy meeting. Is, we would have to then, obviously, based on what our bylaws say in regards to the calling of the first meeting and that a chair is established at that point. But that being said, we actually have to get to a first meeting. So I wanted to see if there was an appetite for us to have this start an hour before the policy meeting. Obviously, it would be digital. And if people aren't interested and they would prefer to actually, you know, I guess, bring it back as another motion to the table to have a start date? I just don't see that being productive. But so is everybody okay with doing it that way or do they want a separate meeting date? I'm just trying to help facilitate this because that bylaw was due to be reviewed. And it is, it has to be reviewed.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Trustee DeRosa?
I had to step out, so I didn't get your preamble to this. So are we suggesting, are we on item 5.4 now?
We are on item 5.4.
So?
So are there any thoughts, any trustees, like is there an interest in doing it prior to policy meeting or holding a separate meeting and?
I'm good before policy. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien.
I agree.
Trustee Agnew, thank you. Is anybody opposed to doing it prior to policy?
I'm opposed.
So am I.
Okay, so do you, do you have another suggestion?
Do I have the floor, Madam Chair?
Sure, you can have the floor.
So given that I have the floor, my commentary on this would be that it be a separate meeting that we would be dealing only with the bylaws. They are very, very difficult to go through. It's hard to go back and forth to ensure that there's congruency with what was put in, you know, policy number two, or sorry, number two relative to number 7.6. I think this requires, you know, dealing with that particular item at a particular time.
Okay, so trustee Intomasi, so are you suggesting that we do a different day? So what I had proposed was that we schedule it prior to policy, that it is separate from policy and then at the first meeting, as per our bylaws, that we actually elect a chair at that meeting to deal with it. But we actually have to meet because the motion has been passed since May 19th and we have not met to deal with this. So I'm trying to help facilitate a time. So if you don't agree and you're, are you suggesting we take a separate date to meet?
Yes, that's exactly what I was suggesting.
Okay, so, and, okay, Trustee DeRosa?
I would voice that preference as well, Madam Chair, because of the importance of this exercise. We are actually authoring, authoring and reviewing our rules of engagement for the board. So it needs to be, it needs to be a completely separate exercise with everybody at the table. And.
Thank you, Trustee DeRosa.
I've made my views, I've made my views on this issue before and I won't bother making, and they're well known, so. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through Madam Chair, I would concur with that, that. Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I would concur with that, that it, it has afforded its own timeframe and perhaps more than an hour. And because, you know, getting ready for policy meeting as well as the bylaw ad hoc committee meeting would be a lot. And it does require, it does require our full attention. I, I, just speaking for my own preference, I would like to have a separate meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Murphy? Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta? They haven't heard from you?
Um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. It, it's very convenient having it before the board meeting because we know we've blocked that time out. My only concern is that an hour is not a lot. When we get into the, you know, as, as you know, getting into these discussions can take some time. And then it becomes very choppy. And I guess maybe if, if we had a goal on when we wanted to complete this task, then it would be easier to determine if we can do that an hour before, or if we need several meetings and, and try and target the extent of those meetings. Otherwise, it's going to potentially drag on quite, quite long. So, so I really hadn't made my mind up yet. But, you know, we do, it, it, it is a big task. It is a, a big undertaking and it's going to take a fair bit of time.
Absolutely. Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm swaying more in the opinion of having a separate night to go through these bylaws so it can be paid full attention. So I'm kind of moving in that direction after all the conversation that's being held.
Okay. So that being said, then we'll try to facilitate a date that works for everybody. I guess we'll have to, to do a consensus and do like a survey. I, I'm happy to, because we actually need to move on this. So that's great. So that was it for item 5.4 unless there's any other comment. Okay, so moving on to information items. As you can see, we've got procedural items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.0, sorry, 6.3. So those are all there for your information. Item 6.4, oh, sorry, it's 10 o'clock. Can I get a motion to extend?
I will.
Trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Carabella?
Trustee Carabella. Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. So item 6.4, these are up timing agenda items.
Sorry, trustee, Madam Chair, I have my hand up regarding the information items.
Okay, what item do you have your hand up in regards to, Trustee Carabella?
I'm just confirming that the procedures, or if we can back up the, yes, thank you, the information items, that nothing was changed because there was nothing in red. So I'm just confirming that staff did not change anything in those information items. Can that be confirmed?
We're just double checking. Just one second. We don't believe so, but just one second.
Okay, thank you.
Our three is a specialist.
Okay, sorry. So Director Daley, I, I had on mute there. And do you want to repeat that? It was, so under VI dash 09A, under requirements, specialist was inserted?
And that's the only change on that one. On VI 09B, just the dates changed. On VI 19, there, most of the changes had to do with replacing the term candidate students, visa students with international students. So we had the international students program take a look at the language there. And then some policy references and admin procedure references were put into the registration of, of students chart.
Okay, so, and those weren't redlined, right? So I'm just confirming that going forward that we maintain that process of if there are any changes in those information items that, and procedures, that they do come back in red. So we can tell if something was there and we don't have to completely read the whole document or guess. Thank you.
Yeah, duly noted.
When, when I hand off policy to the next staff person who's going to support the policy committee, I will make sure they fulfill those requirements. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay. And so then we've got item 6.4, which is our upcoming agenda items for November 10th. Item seven, miscellaneous information, there is none. Item eight, we've already gone in camera. There's no need to return back in camera. Item nine, we do not have any absent committee members. And item 10, a motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee DeRosa, seconded by?
I'll second.
Trustee Agnew. Anybody opposed? Okay. Trustee Duarte, can you lead us in a closing prayer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father and Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Blessed is Lord as he live here today, to take your passion with us, find its flames after we part, we part, and inspire our best contributions. Remind us always of your love as we see our plans unfold and accomplish the goals we set here today. In the name of the Father and Son, Holy Spirit.